This meeting to order is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held on May 15, 2012 at 6:00 PM at the City Council Chambers Building. Deputy City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Piper.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember Howar Ye is not here today.
Okay. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have with us tonight Bruce Morrow to lead us in the pledge if you want to come forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to learn a little bit about Mr. Morrow here pretty soon, but right now we would like to give you a token of our appreciation. On behalf of the council, we would like to give you this certificate, thank you for your citizenship. And we'll learn a little bit more about you than just a quick glimpse. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I have several items to mention. The fire department has issued as of today, a 12-minute fire restrictions due to the potential for fires, particularly brush fires at this time, as evidenced by what's going around, what's happening around the state at this time. So for further information on that, if citizens want to go to our website or our Facebook page, there's more information on what that means in terms of open fires. We are doing a ribbon cutting tomorrow, Wednesday, at 10:00 AM at Mingus and Willard to commemorate the start of the reconstruction of Mingus Avenue between Willard and Highway 89A. So if anybody's available or any of our citizens would like to come out and participate in that, they're certainly encouraged. Also, just to remind the council and again, any citizens who want to come out and celebrate Chief Kassen's retirement next week at the Recreation Center, that would be May 23rd, which is a Wednesday, at 2:00. You're not invited, Mike.
I think, wasn't that supposed to be like a surprise?
No, it's not.
Hi, Chief.
You can't have any surprises in a small town.
Yeah.
Tonight's the surprise, right?
And then this Thursday and Friday, our public safety personnel will be conducting an every 15-minute training program at Mingus High School. And if you haven't seen that, that might be worthwhile getting out to. It starts at 10:00 on, on.
It starts at 11:30.
11:30 on Thursday.
On Thursday, yes.
Okay.
And 9:00 on Friday.
And then our Natural Resources Director, Tom Whitmer, and I believe the mayor, will be doing a water forum tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the Recreation Center. And Tom is very knowledgeable about statewide water, particularly in the rural areas, so definitely worthwhile coming out too. Thursday, we will be installing four-way stop signs at FER and Monte Tesoro, and so we'll have signs up notifying the public of the traffic control change and obviously be working with the police department to educate people for a while on that, on that change. Let's see, what else do I have here? I guess that's it, other than I'm real proud to announce that Cottonwood has been selected as a bicycle-friendly community at the bronze level by the American, what is it, the American Association of Bicyclists, which is quite an achievement, and the categories obviously are bronze, silver, and then gold. And so we'll be striving to achieve those higher levels as, as the years go by. And with that, Madam Mayor, oh, one more thing, we do have the employee and volunteer award ceremony and lunch this Friday, and so most city offices will be closing at noon so we can recognize and thank our volunteers and employees for all their service. With that, Madam Mayor, council?
Thank you. And I would just like to mention that for the public and our television public, that we actually, we have a wonderful Facebook page now, and most of the things that the city manager mentioned, more details can be found on City of Cottonwood Facebook page. Council, Mr. Pratt.
Yeah, as many people know, Yavapai College has just finished another very long semester, and I just do want to remind people that the Verdi Valley campus is totally closed for the summer. So if you need information or something from Student Services, you need to go to the Fire Training Center on Mingus Avenue. It's very important the public knows that.
Right, and their.
They're doing major renovations.
Renovations is the reason.
Yeah.
Okay, so go to the Fire Training Building, and that is on Mingus, right near Happy Jack Road, correct?
Just, yeah, just past the airport.
Just past Happy, just past the airport.
Yeah.
On the right-hand side of the road.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Last Saturday, the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Cottonwood, with their help and the hospital and looking at land, because Senior Center put on a primetime fair that was really well-attended. We had 41 vendors and some music and a lot of information, and the feedback was excellent. They're coming into the chamber and letting us know how well they, they received the information and how much they enjoyed it. And then I just want to congratulate all the seniors in the area that are graduating from college or from high school or even into high school, from middle school. And I think I can get through this real, I probably can't. Steve Smith, he used to run around town in tights, blue tights and a cape and a mask as Mr. Windshield. He was a lot of fun. He was a great guy, but he passed away this week. One missing.
So many condolences to his family and friends, and his, his chamber family was quite large. He had a lot of friends here in town.
He was the voice on the radio that, that did so well. It's a good place, Cottonwood, a good place to live, a good place to visit, but a great place to live. He sounded like Tony the Tiger. He was really, a really, one of the angels amongst.
And he really did a lot for the community. He was somebody that left his mark, a very positive mark on our community, so. Okay, anything else, councilmembers? Mr. Dowling?
Let's see, Saturday, the mayor, I'll just preface it, but the mayor may have more detail, but the mayor and I got to go up to tour the DCT telescope installation up near Happy Jack, which is, that's, that bright light is over in the east as the sun sets, is a nice, very shiny telescope, so it's actually the outer housing. But that was a great trip, and it was very informative, and if I can get enough people together, I'm going to call and ask them if I can bring some more up, because it was really worth going up there.
And another one. Yeah, and I was, when Councilmember Dowling said, "Oh, I know that's that light I see up there," I'm like, because my backyard is facing the opposite way, and I'm like, "Oh, I don't know about that." And then when we got up there, I walked over to the side, there was the Verdi Valley. So he knew exactly what he was talking about. Yeah, this was a, I'd just add a little bit more, this is, the Lowell Observatory is the ones that put this together, and it's all private, there's no government funds at all in, in these projects, but they had a partnership with the Discovery Channel, and so the Discovery Channel got naming rights to it, kind of like Thames Toyota Center or some of the Ballfields Chase Field and that sort of thing. But this structure costs $53 million, and I, I think that they had all of the, they have mayors and councilmembers from the Verdi Valley attend, and I think it's to help us understand how important the dark skies are to, and how much the observatory is put into our economy. It's millions of dollars in jobs and, you know, so it's, it's, it was very worthwhile. We both enjoyed it a lot. Council, any other reports?
Just.
Mr. Bartosz?
Since Councilman Pratt mentioned Yavapai College, I don't think we brought it up that the city did put together a team of employees and councilmembers to go up and participate in Cinco de Vino up at the Yavapai College and help them plant the new vineyards up there, which had a great showing. I mean, they must have had 200 people up there plus, so.
Yeah, I was going to cross that off. I was going to report on that, and that was, well, you had a team that you put together for the city, and it was, I mean, you know, that, it was Saturday, it was really neat how many people showed up, people from the court and Renee and all kinds of folks and you and, and Terrence and his spouse.
City planner.
Yeah, so we had a real good showing. I think we had a contest, right? We have a community contest?
I think it was an unofficial contest.
An unofficial contest, well, I think we won.
So do I. And our city manager even had a big help.
Yeah.
Did you take your granddaughter?
I did.
Oh, how fun. You know, there were children out there, and the parents were saying, "You know, I brought my kids," and Renee said that, our city receptionist, and how in 30 years their children could come back to these vines and say, "Wow, I helped plant these."
Yeah.
It's very cool.
It was a great day.
He planted a seed. I don't know what kind of seed it was, and who knows what's going to grow, but she planted.
All right, well, I think they just like to get out there in that dirt, and that dirt was so beautiful. I mean, somebody said that it was an orchard before, is that true?
I, I know it was one of the camps for the Yavapai Apache on, when they were returning to the area.
Okay.
I'm not sure it was an orchard.
Because the, the soil, I have to say, looks like black Iowa river-bottom dirt.
Yeah, volcanic.
Is it, well, it was just really like, wow, this is really great soil, but with vineyards, every soil produces a different kind of taste, I guess, for grapes and wines.
Yeah.
And you really, you don't need great soil. The more the plants stress, the better juice it produces.
Mm-hmm. Okay, on May 2nd, I attended the Arizona Water 85th Annual Water Conference, engaging in a wider community, and I spoke to 900 people. That was like, whoa, I think that's the biggest crowd I ever spoke with. I think that what I really stressed was that, you know, we just don't really appreciate our utilities like we should, and thanked all of those people there that work hard to make sure that when people turn on their water, there's water there. You know, it's our electricity or anything, it's, it just adds so much to our quality of life to not have to go to a well or a community well and carry water on our heads, you know, so that was a very interesting conference, and I'd like to thank the vice mayor for leading the meeting that I missed. I attended a FIT Kids Board meeting the next day, and then an Elks Ceremony for Youth Awards meeting, and saw a lot of kids getting recognized by the local Elks. That was neat. I did an interview on Inside Cottonwood with Dr. Donna Michaels and Elva Corr with the O'Connor House Voter Engagement Program, and you had a proclamation that you read the council last week. And Elva Corr, I, we didn't say this on the show, but she's actually the wife of Laddie Corr, who was a, he was the president of Arizona State University for many years, and he also just wrote the little plan called "The Arizona We Want," and she was a wingfield, and she's a fifth-generation Verdi Valley person and grew up here. Her family farmed here, actually started in Bridgeport, and of course, we all know the wingfields from Camp Verdi, so it was kind of an interesting interview. She talked a little bit about her past, and then she also worked for Barry Goldwater, which was very interesting, because the moral of the whole story was, is that in those days, Republicans and Democrats knew how to converse to each other in, you know, regular English instead of anger. And it was very interesting to talk about the plan for the O'Connor House, which is civil discourse for issues. I spoke about community gardens at the Natural Resource Conservation District Education Fair, and one of the, I didn't talk about this, but the guy before me talked about the importance of planning with native plants, and this seminar was, was well-attended, but I also took that opportunity to give out our new conservation cards that we have, and I think that's our first time that we have handed those out, and people appreciated them. One lady said that she teaches this, teaches that in school, and she was having to use the cards that had the, had Prescott on them, and she was so happy to get cards that said Cottonwood. So that was great. We'll also be talking or offering our conservation cards tomorrow night at our forum that we're having at the Rec Center, so we'll be introducing the cards there too. I stopped in on invitation at a new food bank called Rising Hope Food Pantry, and that is at the Christian Assembly Education Building next to the post office, and it's open Tuesday 10 to 2. I attended Holocaust training provided by Doug Bartosz and Sheila Polk. I missed the first hour, so I'm going to have to go back and catch up, but if any councilmembers have an opportunity to take time out and attend that, it's very valuable, and we can be very proud of our city manager and the work that he's done to present this program. He did a great job. Very, very well-versed on the issues. On Friday, I went to the Cottonwood Middle School and surprised the sixth-grade teachers. I, I went and saw Jackie Dunsmore and Sherry Heath and complimented them for their outstanding work with our community's sixth graders, and this was in Observance of Teacher Appreciation Week. And they were recommended to me to recognize because they take it upon themselves to, it's, I forget the name of the event, it's for the sixth graders, and they have a barbecue and, and a bonfire and storytelling, and they take it upon themselves to do all of that, and probably sounds like pay for it themselves and everything, so they're very special teachers. And that's it. The other ones have been reported elsewhere. So if there's nothing else, council, we'll move on to the next item, which is the Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? If not, we'll close the floor to the public. The next item is Introduction of New Employees, and we have Mr. Faust with us tonight.
Honorable mayor and city council, tonight I have a great pleasure as well as it's an honor to introduce Bruce Morrow, who comes to us from all the way back in Minnesota, and being from Iowa, mayor, it's a fur piece, but if council remembers back in February, we went out, we basically did a, kind of a local as well as a regional and somewhat of a statewide search, and realistically didn't come too far with us, and so we went out on a nationwide search, and we were very fortunate because we had five individuals who were highly qualified who had put in for the position here in, in Cottonwood, Arizona, which I thought was really great to see, that we had that much interest from the, the public, from outside the state of Arizona. Bruce is, is a very interesting individual. He has worked his way through, has approximately 15 years of transit and transportation experience, but working from the bottom up as a transportation transit driver to dispatcher, all the way into operations manager and systems management, and so he's got a lot of background and experience all the way through, which is really good when we're looking at employees for somebody that's actually started out. Bruce has also been very effective at startup services, so in reality, as we start things up in, in July, on July 1st, it'd be really good to have him onboard right now in order to hit the ground running, and we'll be able to meet things head-on as it pertains to getting started in July. And again, as we, we know, the, the actual 5311 World Transportation Funds started us up on October 1st, but everything was turned over to us by NAPTA, and we'll be moving forward with that direction. And again, it's one of the nice things about having State ADOT working directly with us, and we'll be working directly with Bruce. Bruce has come out ahead of his family, so his wife is a schoolteacher, I'll let him talk a little bit more about that, and he and his family, so again, it's my honor to introduce Bruce Morrow to you.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know what else I can tell you. He pretty much gave you the whole nine yards. Well, yeah, working through transit, I had opportunity to do a number of different things. One of the companies I worked for, Ladlaw Transit, had what they call a manager and training program, where they sent us all around to various operations for Ladlaw and learn how to manage transit operations, including budgets, how to deal with unions, how to deal with payroll and parts and all of that. So there's a very comprehensive training program. It was six months of wandering around nomically, all their various operations to learn how to manage a transit operation. Then I got to be operations manager for the University of Minnesota, that was a startup, and that led into being the operation, or general manager for the Savannah College of Art and Design as a shuttle program in Savannah, Georgia. I can tell you, there's a lot of difference in climate between Savannah, Georgia and Cottonwood, Arizona.
Very much so.
I much prefer.
Humidity.
Well, I prefer this better. Humidity is not good for me, and my wife also suffers badly in humidity, so we're both looking forward to spending time here.
It's a dry heat.
I keep hearing that.
It's still hot. Until August. It's still hot.
But my wife is staying back home right now. She's a teacher, and she's finishing up her classwork. My youngest daughter, who will be coming down in December, is finishing up her semester in college, and then she's opted for a summer semester, so she's going to be staying for that. And then her math teacher, because she ended up with a 4.0 in math this last semester, asked her if she would tutor other students for the fall semester, so she's going to be staying with some friends of ours until December, and then she's going to come down, and she's looking at the, at Flagstaff for finishing up her classes.
Be great.
She has much interest in science and math, and astronomy was one of her big subjects she liked, so.
She'll be very close to some pretty prestigious facilities.
Exactly, and, and I told her that, and she was like, "Ooh." So for her, that's great excitement. So, and I'm looking forward to being here and working with the transit operations here. Richard and I have talked a lot about the possibilities, things that we might be able to do in five or 10 years, and that's very exciting. I see what you have going on now. I've heard a lot of good comments from the public, as I've been out wandering around illegally, trying to figure out where I'm at, and asking directions, people have had a lot of good things to say about CAT and links, so I'm very encouraged by that. Got to meet some of the folks out there today, and I'm very encouraged with what I'm seeing, so it's, it looks like it's going to be a fairly smooth transition. It's going to be a lot of work, but we'll get it done, and it'll be good.
Thanks. I know in our presentation tonight about the sal, not the salary, the.
Survey.
Survey, thank you. It talks about some of, some of the results of the survey, talked about cats and, and our reduction in services, so I would assume that's something that's going to be discussed in the future, is how we can accommodate the public and hopefully at a cost that we can afford. So you, you will have your work cut out for you, it sounds like.
Oh, I'm aware of that, and that's okay, because I like challenges, and startups are always a challenge, but my goal is to continue and improve the service and improve the range of services we can provide, so.
Great.
We'll see what it all. We'll see what it all turns out to be.
Sounds like we have some good talent to help us get to where we want to go.
Bruce is very modest also in the context of he has his master's degree and master's degree in business administration.
Wow.
So that's highly qualified.
That's great.
He has incredible background also in IT, so it's been to have.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much and welcome.
Thank you.
The next item, item number seven is approval of minutes, the regular meeting of May 1st, 2012 and work session of May 8th, 2012. I didn't see any corrections. Did anyone else find any? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 1st, 2012 and the work session of May 8th, 2012.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion and the mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding agenda items are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Item number eight is unfinished business. Item number one under eight is ordinance number 585, amending the City of Cottonwood Municipal Code by deleting chapter 2.72 Self-Insurance Trust Board from Title II Administration and Personnel, and this is our first reading. And let me get over there. Okay, so Mr. Horton?
And Madam Mayor and Council, good evening. Notwithstanding what the agenda says, this is actually the, and you were at the Water Conference when we had our first reading, but this is the second reading.
Oh, okay.
And this is a housekeeping matter. We had a trust fund and a trust board to help administer it. That trust fund is now dwindling and almost gone and we now provide those benefits through another vehicle, so the trust board has now become a little bit of an anachronism and we no longer need to have them and if we have them, we have to convene them every year and we convene them for nothing, so we just thought maybe we'd do away with this particular board. So this would be the second and final reading of the ordinance to do that.
Thank you. And I highlighted first reading of ordinance, but I see if the whole sentence, if I would have read it very carefully, says council consideration of the first reading, so I apologize. Okay, any discussion? It was all discussed last, last meeting, probably in pretty good detail and so are there any comments from the public on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Delling?
I move to approve ordinance number 585 and repeal chapter 2.72 Self-Insurance Trust Board from Title II Administration and Personnel of the Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Delling made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy clerk, please read ordinance, ordinance number 585 by title only.
Ordinance number 585 and ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the municipal code of the City of Cottonwood by repealing chapter 2.72 Self-Insurance Trust Board from Title II Administration and Personnel. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number two under item number eight is ordinance number 586, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona for a parcel of land totaling approximately 1.2 acres located along the south side of SR 89A approximately 200 feet west of its intersection with the, with South 12th Street, APN 40605036Q and 40605036R so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C1 light commercial and AR 43 agricultural residential to C2 heavy commercial. Second and final reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This pertains to a proposed development of a new discount tire retail center in the City of Cottonwood at 1175 East 89A. This was part of your agenda on May the 1st, at which time staff gave a pretty good rundown of the project proposal. Simply put, it's, this would rezone these two parcels right here located along the south side of 89A within the C1 zone. From C1 to C2, basically to accommodate the rear service bays that would be part of the proposal. Without the service bays, this would actually be allowed in the C1 zone. So the proposal was to rezone in order to accommodate that on a permanent basis. On April the 16th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of proposals subject to the design review submittal as outlined in ordinance 586. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance at this time. It's just a depiction of the site elevation. Once again, we basically ran through the presentation two weeks ago, but if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Any questions, Mr. Pratt?
No, I just have some comments. We really did go through this fairly thoroughly and we decided there are a few very positive things about this. One is you're going to have a business occupying what is now an empty retail space. They will be hiring at least 10 people, so that's 10 new jobs for the area. And they're looking at revenues of about $3 million, which really adds to our sales tax collection. So I think it's a positive for the area and they have agreed to some of the stipulations set by the planning and zoning, so I thought it was a positive thing.
Okay, any comments from the public on this item? Any more comments from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve ordinance number 586.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, please, city clerk, deputy city clerk, please read ordinance number 586 by title only.
Ordinance number 586 and ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona for a parcel of land totaling approximately 1.2 acres located along the south side of SR 89A approximately 200 feet west of its intersection with South 12th Street, APN 406-05-036Q and 406-05-036R so as to change, to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C1 light commercial and AR-43 agricultural residential to C2 heavy commercial.
All right. You had just as much fun with that as I did.
Didn't like breathing.
All right, moving on to item number nine, the consent agenda. There are no items tonight. Item number 10 is new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is a ward of bid for the construction of three potable water reservoirs for the city's water utility system. Mr. Biggs?
Madam Mayor, council. This evening, I ask that council consider awarding the bid for construction of three potable water reservoirs to Superior Tank Company. Superior's bid was $668,356. A second vendor, Engineering America, submitted a bid of $685,221. Bids were checked and met the required specifications. Staff is recommending the, recommending the contract for construction be awarded to Superior Tank. These three reservoirs would add nearly 1.3 million gallons of storage capacity. This brings our total storage capability to approximately 5 million gallons. The capacity acts as a shock absorber for the distribution system, improving fire flows, public safety, and system reliability and redundancy. Additional benefits are derived due to fewer start and stop cycles of the well pumps. This translates to longer equipment life cycles and lower operating expenses. The locations for these three reservoirs are based on inadequate storage capacity at specific well sites or the need to shift water between areas that have an imbalance between population well, storage capacity. The first reservoir has a capacity of 480,000 gallons and would be constructed, constructed at well 89 facility off Mesquite Drive. The facility currently has a single 100,000 gallon reservoir and is, that's undersized for the service area, which includes parts of Grotty Village 7 and 8 and the lower southern part of the City of Cottonwood. The second reservoir has a capacity of 300,000 gallons and would be located up the hill from us basically, at the Yuma well site. This would be the second 300,000 gallon reservoir on site there. And our hope is that it would increase the service area for this well site from basically just the old town area out to 5th Street. We'd like to push it further out, 10th Street, perhaps Riverfront Park, that area. And it would have a great impact on improving fire flow capabilities in this area. Third reservoir has a capacity of 500,000 gallons and we would be located adjacent to what we call the Highway 260 well. That's on Highway 260 behind DK Cycle. It has a, basically right now it's just a pipe in the ground. It has no reservoir. The well is there and we unable to use it because it has no reservoir. If this facility could be built, it would supplement the region around Walmart north to Highway 89. This area is currently served by well 5, which is the one up here on the hill at Willard and 89, and Will 89, which is out by the airport. So you can see both those sites have to push quite a way to serve the Walmart area. Council authorized $750,000 for the fiscal year 2012 budget for the construction of three potable water reservoirs. This project has been carried over for several years because of the costs associated with the arsenic remediation and some water distribution issues that we had. Those other items took priority. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Pratt?
I just have one on the sheet that we got where it shows the bid. It says exhibits 3 through G and for one of the companies, it says missing exhibit G. What is that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I never saw the bids. I was not even involved in that part of the process.
That's the English instructor and me and I...
No, that's good.
I have to ask those.
I don't know what exhibit G was. Any other questions?
Well, I just would comment that as Mr. Pratt says, it seems like a no-brainer. And we budgeted plenty for this. I'm pleased to see that it came under what we had budgeted for and like the document says, it's a critical element for a safe operating system, peak use. And we'll add fire capacity, be able to fight fires, especially in the Walmart areas, well, any area, I guess, as long as...
Yeah, this has benefits throughout the entire...
One of them will be like exactly in my backyard.
Yes, ma'am.
And the tank that is there is 100,000 gallons and this one's going to be almost 500,000. Is there room for that back there?
It's going to be 70 feet in diameter and 16 feet tall.
Okay. And that would even be nice because it might cut down a little bit of the noise that's back there, so. Yeah, so it sounds like a good plan and...
Madam Mayor, I could spec, I can't tell you, but I can speculate about the exhibits. Oftentimes, when we put these IFBs out, we attach exhibits that include the form of the bonds we're going to require, the form of the release for the bonds, certain attestations and certifications that we're going to need them to provide when they sign and deliver the contract. So I'm not, I'm not too worried that they miss returning an exhibit as part of their bid, but just for whatever assurance that provides.
Okay. And you would be looking at this contract again to ensure its completeness before it would be signed, so. Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Any comments from the public on this item? Mr. Alefent?
Madam Mayor, council, Bob Al, 330 Desperado Drive, Cottonwood, Arizona. Just a question about the environmentally pleasing color of these tanks. Are they going to, will an effort be made so that they're consistent with the environment in which they're placed?
I sure hope so because one's in my backyard.
Yes, when you base, you base your question.
But I do know that in my neighborhood, when they added some pieces of equipment back there, was it the arsenic treatment? They went to the neighborhood and they, they gave them some different samples that they could pick and asked the neighborhood to help pick out the colors and so I think that they're very conscious of that. But environmentally, I totally agree with you. That's the best way to go.
So we can, the neighbors can be assured that that's effort will be undertaken?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It has been in the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so what we need here is, I guess, a motion. Mr. Ilinski?
I'll move toward the contract to Superior Tank Company for a total price of $668,356, excluding tax.
Second. Okay, Mr. Ilinski made the motion. Council member Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the next item. Special event liquor license applications for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for business mixers. And Ms., Ms. Vice Mayor Karen is declaring a conflict.
I think I should too, since I'm on the board of the chamber.
Okay, all right, goodbye. We have a quorum with four, so we're good. Any discussion on this item, which generally would be put, placed under the consent agenda, but because we have council members who are active in the chamber, we also have with us tonight the CEO, president of the chamber, Lana Tolleson. And I don't know if you have any comments that you want to make? Any questions for Lana?
No.
If not, do I hear a motion? Mr. Delling?
I will move, I move to recommend approval of the special event liquor license applications submitted by Lana Tolleson applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for business mixer events scheduled for June 21st, September 20th, October 18th, and December 13th, 2012.
Second. Mr. Delling made the motion. Council member Norman seconded it. I didn't ask for comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the next item. Results of the city's 2012 community survey. And we have Ms. Kyla Ellen to give a presentation tonight.
All right, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council members. As a brief history for our TV audience and public audience, at the 2009 annual retreat held by the city council, we created a group of strategic initiatives. Among those was strategic initiative three, which was to build and retain a strong diversified economy and among that was a goal of create a citizen survey to determine the shop, determine shops and services needed for Cottonwood. And so this is our second community survey that we've had, even though this isn't on the strategic initiatives anymore, it's because we assume we're going to have it either every year or biennially, biennially? Is that how I pronounce that, Terrence? Get that correct. And so this will be our second one. This time, we also focused just on city services. We didn't want to go and do the whole business, business requests at this point. The survey was a little bit different this year in that you'll see in your packet, we added a new section to it, which allowed for citizens to give their contact information. So if they left comments, we could actually respond to them. And this was a really great benefit because the city manager actually reviewed every, you see, every survey that came in, he actually reviewed them and if it was a comment that was worth addressing, that he felt he could address, he actually contacted that individual, whether it was by email, by telephone. We didn't always get a response back if we left a phone message or an email, but more often than not, he was able to contact that individual, not only those that had complaints or concerns, but those that he, that had comments for the city. He was also able to contact them and say thank you. He was also able to contact them and say thank you, and get a little bit more feedback from them, what were we doing so great, and what else was there that they thought we could do. So it was pretty neat to have that on there. I'd like to mention one survey in particular. I'm gonna have it right here. This one just kind of touched my heart a little bit, and we're able to jump on it really quickly. This is a survey from Doris Peterson, and I'm gonna read you her recommendations or her comments. She said, "Being a blind vet, I find difficulty in crossing downtown intersections. Although new countdown traffic lights have been installed, they are of little use to those of us with low to no vision. Lights equipped with auditory signals would be more beneficial. Vets train, blind vets train in various centers such as Tucson, and have learned to use such crossings using sounds to signal safety." What's neat to me is this was jumped on very quickly by the city and by city manager Bartosz, and as of yesterday, at the Main and Mingus intersection, we now have an auditory signal. So when a blind vet or anybody that has visual impaired problems uses that intersection, they will have the auditory signals, which is very neat.
And you said that's at Main and Mingus?
Main and Mingus, that's the only one-
That's the only one that we control.
ADOT controls the rest, but we were able to get on it very quickly.
Did we contact ADOT?
Yeah, we've been in contact with ADOT, and we're trying to get them interested in doing this to their signal system.
Okay, well, thank you, great.
All right, this is how many? We mailed out, this is about 1,000, 1,500 more than we mailed out last year. We mailed out 9369 surveys. We got a little bit fewer back, 889. So we did a 9.5% return rate. It's a little bit less than 10% I like to get, but so many of the comments were so consistent that we still feel it was a good cross-section of the public's view. What's really neat is the results of the survey. Well, let me go over this just real quick for those that are watching. We used a real simple scoring process. It was zero through five. Zero was either they didn't mark it, or they didn't know. They marked it, they didn't know, they weren't familiar with that service. Poor was one point, or very poor was one point. Poor was two, fair was three, poor was good, and five was excellent. And if I got a percentage of figures of 4.49, that rounded down. A 4.51 would round up, because I wanted to keep it whole figures. We didn't want to get too technical there. So it would be either a solid, poor, fair, good. That's how the figures were worked. It was interesting to note, and this happened the last time we had a survey, too, more than half of the surveys returned are from people that lived in our community more than 10 years. So it's nice to know that people come here and they want to stay. We have 159 from six to 10 years, 141 from one to five, 50 for less than a year. These are just the ones that responded. And unknown just means they forgot to mark that spot. They just zipped right past it and went to the questions. If you have any questions while I'm going along, please interrupt. We're gonna go right into the numbers here. We had an increase in all but two categories, which was really nice to see, especially in our economic slump. Even though we were there, we continued to excel. I'm gonna just give you kind of an idea of how much we increased in each category. EMS, we went up by .03 points. Fire is our first excellent. They made it over the 4.5, so they actually made it excellent, which is wonderful. They increased by 11, .11 points. Police by .05. Crime reduction efforts by .03, and code enforcement improved by .05. They're just still at fair, just barely at fair, and a couple more points next year, and we know they're gonna bump up over that. But there's only two categories that we have fair. One is the code enforcement, and one is, I think it is our major residential roadways.
So on code enforcement, did any of the comments, I mean, do people want us to actually, do they want us to go out and harangue residents?
We may get some comments.
What do they want?
It's hard to tell, because quite a few of these, we mail them out to all the water customers, not just the ones that live in Cottonwood. So we do have some complaints in the county area, and when they give some kind of indication of where it is, Doug's able to give that to Chip Davis, but they don't always say where. They might say, you know, "It's looking really dumpy when we're driving into Cottonwood. That's a big area, we're not quite sure." But if they say, "I wish people would pick up trash in Old Town," which we did get, okay, that narrows it down a little bit, and we can get code enforcement to focus in that area.
Okay, so they just like the community to look cleaner, is the issue?
What's really neat is just having that community cleanup right at the same time we sent this out. So people are realizing we are proactive. They're complaining about something we're already addressing, so we are on top of it. That's nice to see.
Madam Mayor, and this goes back to that quality of life issue, where people who live in a neighborhood want their neighborhood to look clean.
Right.
And, you know, if it's not clean-
Clean and space, and healthy.
Yeah, it doesn't create that quality of life, and it also has a potential to bring down other people's property values. So, you know, what we heard mostly was weeds were a big issue, and we were able to respond to a couple of specific complaints where they provided the information. But generally, it's weeds and trash and clutter, and people using their property for something that's not allowed by code or zoning.
Like vehicle repair or something.
Mm-hmm.
And vehicles, little junk vehicles are another one. But far fewer this year, far fewer than we've had in the previous-
So we improved, which is a great thing.
So we're making a difference, yeah. All right, the next one is, let me go down. Here we're gonna talk about, again, everybody's improved a little bit. 14, .14, water service quality increased. The rec center was up by .15. Youth programs and families was up by .06. Seniors increased by .15, and athletic facilities up by .11. So again, all going up.
You know, and just a comment on the water service quality. I received several comments about people's concern over the quality of water. And when I called them up and asked them, you know, why, and they would go, "Well, we get these notices in the water bill that says we should be concerned about the arsenic." And once I explained to them that all the arsenic had been remediated, you know, it was no longer a concern, but the federal government still makes us send out these notices for four quarters after we meet the standard, that's why you're still getting them. But the water meets federal standards, and it's very safe.
So I think that's-
It's, "Oh, okay, well, thanks. Thanks for the information."
That's so important, so I think we should repeat that, especially for our television public, is that all of the arsenic has been remediated, but the federal government requires that we send out the notices for four more quarters, which is a year.
Right.
And so that's why the public is still getting these notices, even though it has been remediated for-
But let me correct that and say that they should not receive any more notices now. We have met-
Okay, we've met the year.
-all those requirements. We've met the four quarters, and so they won't be receiving those notices.
Was it possible for us to send out a letter saying that? Saying that we've met those?
It's probably a good idea.
All of, that we had, explaining that, we had to do this for a year after we complied?
Yeah.
And we've met that past year?
Yeah, that's a good idea. We can do that. As you're aware, Mayor, I'm doing a letter for the newspaper in response to the survey results, and we're also preparing another Just the Facts newsletter, and so we'll make sure it's covered in there very clearly.
Great, thank you.
That would be nice.
That's the hardest thing, I think, for people to understand, is I got this letter, and it says-
Lot of great comments about the rec center, how appreciative people are-
That's good, good to know.
And here we have the only two categories that we actually dropped a few points, and that's major roadway quality and residential roadway quality. And as expected, I'm sure, most, the roads most cited were 12th Street between Fern and 89A, as well as Mingus Avenue. And we know at the last regular council meeting, council approved an award to a contractor, and that contractor has just begun blue staking. So it'll be a little bit longer, but we expect any time that he'll start working on that. But he's just finishing up his blue staking now, so that the public will actually see some work going on that road, and that will, I'm sure, satisfy them. As far as 12th Street, of course, it's gonna be a while. They're still working on plans for realigning the paving and the placing the sidewalks. It's about 95% design completion, and staff continues to work on the right-of-way acquisitions that they need, allocations to increase the roadway width and put the sidewalks in. The construction phase for this project is planned for about 2014. Is that correct?
That's completion.
That's completion.
It should be starting sometime in 2013.
Okay.
Again, depending on how successful we are with, we've got 39 different rights of way to acquire, and so that's gonna take some time.
And I think, too, it's difficult for the public to understand that we have four major road projects going on at the same time. But did we hire anybody, any extra people to help? No, our staff is dealing with the number of employees they've always had, and it's their hand, they've got a lot on their plates. But I know that council wants us to work as fast as we can, and I know that staff is working as fast as we can. But it's gotta be hard for the public to hear us talk about it for several years and not see, you know, any progress, even though behind the scenes, a lot of progress is being made.
And as evidenced by Mingus Avenue and the rights of way that were required there, I think the council and the public hopefully saw, you know, how, I mean, those are all legal processes-
Exactly.
...that have to be approved by the council, and it's a pretty extensive process.
It is, it is.
It certainly delayed us on Mingus Avenue, and we're working hard on 12th Street, but it's gonna take us a little bit of time.
And I think if the public understands that, you know, we could have done it less well, we could have had little paths instead of sidewalks, but the public, we met, and they said they wanted, you know, the sidewalks, the bike lanes, and so it is taking longer. To do it right, it is taking longer, but in the end, it will be worth it, I think.
I think it is a public education type of thing that needs to go out there, and the articles that Doug will write-
Right.
-will address most of those.
Right, and I think maybe, you know, if we could just, every quarter or something, write something for the paper to talk about our progress. I think they just don't hear anything about it, and so they think we're not doing anything.
Exactly.
So maybe we can put that on our list of things to do, our long list.
All right, both the library services and library facility jumped up a few points, and I want to touch base on the library, and I'll talk a little bit more about them in a minute. 99% of the comments we got in the library were positive. Any negative comments where we'd like some more books in there, we'd like to be open longer, we'd like you to be open on Monday. But even commenting with those comments, they would still score a four or a five. So the library's doing a wonderful job.
Great.
And we were just mentioning the CAT Link service. Their quality is up. It's up by CAT's Municipal Court and Commercial Development is up by .01. .43, that's the biggest increase, was the Municipal Court and .05 for commercial planning and zoning. And again, CAT's Link service was another one of those addressed, where they were desiring to have that service increased, and that was mentioned. Well, when Bill was up here speaking a little bit, we touched on that. Oh, he's got a lot on his shoulders. That's why he's out of here. All right. I think that the two new ones that we've added here are business-friendly quality, how they feel the city of Cottonwood is business-friendly, and how our, would rate the quality of our Economic Development and Business Assistance Center. We scored very well on business-friendly quality, got a lot of nice comments. I think a lot of people were a little confused about what the VAC was. I think that would actually have been higher, even though it's scored as good. I think we would have gotten even more if people had understood what the VAC was. And I think next time, round that well. All right. This is the open comments section that was provided on the survey, and it's a little bit more difficult to quantify, so we just kind of get the majority of comments. And they're in generalized terms, the top four comments provided descending in order from those commented most to least. Number one, of course, we've discussed, was the roadway improvement concerns. Again, they see patching, they see we're out there with a little heater on Main Street, and that's what they're thinking is the only thing we're gonna do. Once we educate them, I think they'll be happier. Citizens repeatedly requested the library be open on Mondays, have longer hours, and more current publications. And the council just met, I know, not long ago with the library board, and this was one of the topics discussed, so I know, again, we're letting the public know that this is being addressed even before we got these in, that the council is on top of it and aware of it, and working on solutions. As city manager said, citizens continue to express concerns with the water quality because of that notice, and as well as the desire for combined water sewer bills, which I'm getting, so I know they're getting there, it's just it's not, they can't do everybody at the same time, but I've been on it for a while, and the ability to pay online. And actually, one of my bills are paid, not online, but automatic payments are pulled out. Again, I think it's just an education process where you give them your debit card or your bank account number, and they'll pull those bills out, and you don't need to get online.
Was that something that we had talked about, putting a notice on our, and have we done that? Making the suggestion of the solutions of people that want to pay online?
Actually, we looked at contracting with a third party to collect online payments for us. The problem is, for the number of people who actually pay online, financially, it just doesn't make sense to do it. Most people pay probably like Kyla does through her bank, or they send it back in the mail, or they hand-deliver it down there. And I think the percentage of people who actually pay, who would want to pay directly online to the city is very minimal. And so the cost, it would increase their bill by, what, two bucks every time they paid, or something like that? And then there's an initial cost to get into the program.
And this all came before the council, at least once, if not twice?
This is one of those times. It's been discussed a couple of times.
Right.
And bottom line, I think it was gonna be like, it was like a dollar for every single account that has to get posted. They don't post this separate accounts. So it's something like, I think it was like $8,000 altogether a month just to go ahead and post it out there. And if you get five people, or 10 people, or 500 people that are willing to use the service, that's a pretty costly service at this point in time. We're looking at the new software that we're be talking about shortly, about trying to cut those costs, but bottom line, it's still extremely expensive for small organizations such as ours. We're 200,000 population, we were billing out that much. It'd make it more feasible. But we haven't completely ignored it. We're still looking into the possibility of doing it. It is a costly proposition.
Right, yeah, I think Clarkdale does it, but they do charge two bucks or something for everybody that uses that service, which is steep. I was just, my question was, is there someplace on the website where we could, like, put a link that says, "If you wish to pay your bill online," and explain that we don't have that, but the other solutions? Like you can have, you know, have it taken out by your bank, or-
There's always bill pay.
It could be, it could be on the website already, I don't know, because I-
No, it's not. It'll be something we'll probably have to write up on it, put up on there, so I can also possibly Facebook or something.
Thank you.
The other piece of that is, we'll also be able to move on combining the bills much more quickly once we get the new software in place as well.
I had, yeah, I had a question about that, if that was going to-
With our current software, it's-
I guess my question's down there on the software item. But, yeah, so we've just had so many struggles with that, trying to combine the bills. I mean, we've been trying for a long time, but because some of our customers are in the city and some are out, that's created a roadblock for some things. And then, as I understand it, our software just isn't meshing. Their software and our, and finance's software are just not communicating. But we have combined probably a good number of them already. Whatever we can has been combined.
Yeah.
It is nice to have them both at the same time.
But that is something that always comes up for the public. They just don't understand getting two bills.
And it can't happen instantaneously. They're still working on it. All right, that's most of it. This was a comment made by one of the returns. "I'm happy to live here. I finally found the best place to live." And I just want to say, as I go through these, and I know as the city manager goes through them, it's just a terrific tool, and we'd like to be able to instantly be able to contact those individuals that have concerns. And I hope next year, or the next time this is done, there's lots of concerns, they didn't have that contact information, and it almost makes you sad, because you can't get back to them and say, "Oh, this is what's going on." So I hope next year, more of them will put that contact information, whether it's an email, or a phone number, or even just a mailing address, so we can send a letter back to them. I would hope they do that, but it was great to have the view to- I would hope they do that, but it was great to have the view to see that all the city departments are increasing, with the exception of roads, and it was fun to watch that increase. So if you have any questions, we had all of them there.
I like the happy ending. Well, I just want to say thank you to the city manager and to Kyla, too, but, you know, for your response to citizens, you're very responsive, and you're appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, and most of the people I called were very surprised to get a call.
I'm sure they were.
But very appreciative of the information.
I mean, when I send something, I'm sure the rest of the council experiences the same thing, you send something to the city manager, and it's addressed immediately. So we appreciate your response time.
Thank you. And my thanks to Kyla, because she really runs this whole thing.
I know, she did a great job.
Good job, Kyla.
We appreciate you.
If you're interested, I have both of last year and this year, and it has all the comments off onto one side, so if you're really curious about the kind of comments, they're in my office, anytime, stop by.
Okay, and the public can stop, the public can stop also, okay. Thank you very much, great job. Appreciate that. All right, any questions from the public on the survey? Council, did you have anything else before we move along? All right, thank you. Item number four is award of the city's enterprise resource planning project software. And we have, I'm assuming Mr. Rodriguez, I'm trying to get there. Yes, Mr. Rodriguez, thank you.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Mayor, Council, for well over a year's time, we've been looking at replacing the city's financial software. About 18 months ago, we started talking with other departments and looking at a municipal-type software where it's integrated, we could put a lot of other departments on there, and we're, in a sense, interactive, but any data that we put into the system can be picked up by all the different departments. And with that in mind, we looked at several different companies, we looked, as a matter of fact, we looked at four companies, one of them was New World Systems, and others were Tyler Technologies, Springbrook Software, and one other one that is being used by Sedona currently. When we started looking at these things, we assembled a team from the different departments to actually sit down and go through the demos, and we actually quickly eliminated two of them. One of them was the Casell software, which Sedona's currently using, and they're actually dropping, because it had some security issues that were kind of peculiar to us, and we didn't want to get involved with someone that had some security problems. The other one that quickly dropped was New World Software, and they're more of an upscale software program, does wonderful, they all do great work, but New World was more along the lines of the, you know, 30,000, 50,000 population and not up, and we didn't want to buy more than we actually needed. So that left Tyler and Springbrook Software. It was a really tough choice, we sent a group of three, it was Kirsten Lennon, Lisa Elliott, our purchasing manager, and Toni Fanning from utilities to visit the two corporate offices, and while they were there, they visited some local sites that are running their software, met with their CEOs, also met with their IT department and the support staff. Peculiar was, I wanted it off my lap, and I wanted them to go ahead and make the decision, that way I don't get blamed for stuff. But after they came back, we assembled a team, and, you know, they were split down the middle as two. So we had a few favoring one software, a few favoring the other, and bottom line, it ended up back on my lap. But I recruited Susan Monroe from, that's working for our airport, to do a quick call to a number of the different vendors, installations, to find out what the problems were. I don't care about the good stuff, they're both good companies, I wanted to know exactly where the issues were, and both of them came up with similar issues conversions, which is not uncommon. Bottom line, when I started adding up the numbers and looking at the results of the survey that Susan did, pretty much it was clear that we probably needed to go with Springbrook Software. And one of the biggest issues, besides cost, because they were both comparable, was the return on investment, which is a little bit smaller, a little bit better for Springbrook. But the other one was the comment that just about everyone we interviewed, including some of our staff members, was the intuitive nature of the software. From one screen, they could get to anything that they wanted versus remembering tabs and what each of different tabs had. And so, you know, with that being said, I went ahead and contacted both Tyler and Springbrook, asked them to do a best-in-final, as a matter of fact, we did two best-in-finals and got the prices down pretty good. So what we're looking at right now is about $277,000 for the Springbrook Software, but I'm requesting council to allow us to have the, some flexibility, up to $300,000 that we currently have in the budget, so that when they come in and implement, if there's anything, other applications or modules that we need to pick up, that we are able to pick them up without having to come back to council and ask for additional funding. That's about $23,000 more than the bid came in for, for the modules that we looked at, but there's a lot, there's this, you know, arm-long list of options that I'm sure that utilities might like to have, rebuilding inspection or so forth. So I'd like to have that leeway to be able to, you know, add a module or two if we need to, in order to get exactly what the different departments want. With that being said, I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Pratt?
No, I just had a couple of comments. I think you justified going with Springbrook well, as we all know the importance of having software that is user-friendly. You mentioned they only have one software version, it's all on .net, and that they have guaranteed the maintenance cost for five years without an increase. I think that's very important, too, so you did some good negotiating, I would think.
It worked out real well for us.
And again, if your folks feel like this is one they can work with, it seems to me that that's where we should go, and I also understand the request to go for 23,000 more, possibly, if we need to add some more modules. So I think the whole thing's a good proposal, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Alinsky?
I'm just wondering why we didn't do an RFP or something similar for this? It seems like it's kind of a big deal, and I just wonder why they didn't, we didn't ask them to sort of cater to the city, or work with the city more to.
A lot of it is because of the technical nature, to do the write-up on it, and they've got, if you look at the amount of modules that they have, they have a boatload, for lack of another phrase, but they've got a lot of modules out there, and as we go through them, as we started putting this thing together, we realized, hey, that's kind of neat, and as you put the different team members, because that's, we needed to have my in. So as we put the team members, it wasn't no longer a financial module, it was a business license, business registration, it was a building permit, it was a utility, including water and sewer, oh, and we wanted to be able, to be able to do what they call a positive pay, which will run checks, determine to electronic payments. So there was so many things out there that we just, and there's so many people, so many cities already purchasing these types of software, that we didn't see the reason why to spend weeks or months trying to put together a mod, an RFP, when there's plenty of contracts to write out from any of these companies. So we decided to go ahead and do the demos, look at them, get a feel for them, and as we went along, we started jotting down, well, we'd like to have this, we'd like to have that, we'd like to have that, and we started adding the numbers together, and come up with what we currently have.
And I bet that we were going with the contract that Sedona has already, so we didn't have to reinvent the wheel, or?
Not necessarily the contract, but we're going with their bid. They actually went out for an RFP.
Okay, well, that's.
Who were writing on their RFP, their bid process.
Right. So I have a question, will this software be able to put benefits on the employee's paychecks?
Benefits on the employee's paychecks, I, as in?
Well, we've always, we've had this discussion for the past five or six years about the fact that I would like to see employee benefits on their paychecks every time they get a paycheck, but we didn't really have the software or ability to do that.
And I'm not sure if this will actually be able to do that. We do that, once a year, we send out a statement, we've been doing it for, this will be our third or fourth year that we actually do it. You know, I, I, we haven't, we haven't really addressed that, because we only do it once a year. I don't think there's going to be much of a space, as it is, if you look at your payroll check, there's not much space to add much more to it.
Well, it's just something I learned by example, because when I worked for Supervisor Chip Davis, he worked to get the county to list on the employee's paycheck, every time they got a paycheck, their benefits were listed, and there was a reason for that, and that's because employees get a third more than their salaries in benefits, and yet they don't know that, you know? But if it's on their paycheck, and I experienced that, it was on my paycheck, I'm like, wow! You know, I mean, I get this much in pay, but, you know, the county paid this much for me. So it was just something to help employees appreciate what the taxpayer does for them in benefits. And I just thought with the new, with the new software, maybe it would do it.
And we've responded to that with the annual report that here.
But I would like to see it every paycheck.
But I think it has a greater impact on an annual basis.
And you could do annual, too.
Because I think the thing is, is, you know, you get a paycheck every two weeks, I mean, you don't necessarily really pay attention to it, but at the end of the year.
I did.
When you total it up, and you really see what the costs incurred are, I think it really has an impact.
Mr. Pratt?
There's another point of view on that, too. I know people who get paychecks with those benefits, and they feel like the company is then defending themselves in a way, saying, you don't make much money, because here's your extra benefit, rather than what you really get. Well, it's seen that way by some people, I know people who see it that way.
That's a good point, too.
Yeah.
Just asking if the software was going to accommodate that?
That's one thing we didn't address, we can ask, but if not.
They're still getting it once a year.
They'll still be getting it once.
But I'll always bring it up. Never satisfied, totally satisfied with the answer, I go along with it, but, okay, so the other question you've already answered, will we be able to easily combine water and wastewater bills? And the answer was yes.
One of the things we did with the wastewater, I think it's kind of been put on the back burner so we can get this thing, to get the software going, I know that, I know that Toni's still working on a lot of the accounts, but we do plan to use this software to help us do the merging. One thing that still has to come before we complete all of this is, we need to combine the water and sewer policies, merge those two together, so that we don't have any conflicts between the two different.
Thought we had worked on that, no?
I think it's been worked on on and off, I don't think it's been fully completed.
Okay.
It's not an easy project.
No, I'm sure. Okay, those are just my questions. And any other questions from the council? Any comments from the public? If not?
Just a comment, Mayor, and have you been involved in large IT changeovers?
They're horrible.
Making them really challenging, and I think Rudy has done an excellent job of getting staff input to make sure that, you know, we have staff buy-in, because that is also critical for IT changeover, because it's always painful for employees to have to learn new, new software, new programs, so.
And they usually end up staying overtime during the change, so it's a big commitment.
It helps a lot, and in reference to Councilmember Alinsky's question about, you know, this is really the beauty of being able to hop on somebody else's contract around the state, is it saves us so much time of doing all the work that somebody else has already done for us, and with a small staff, I mean, it's just absolutely critical that we, that we take advantage of those opportunities where we can, and I think in IT, it's probably a good form to do that, so, but I think this is something that, we all know how frugal Rudy is, and we have delayed this, and delayed this, and delayed this, and to have, you know, a citywide software package that we can look at, I think it'll bring us up into the 21st century, so it's a good investment for the city.
I agree, and that's just like, we probably should have done this a long time ago, but as you stated in your document, we didn't, I mean, with the economy, we just couldn't do it, but we really needed it a long time ago, I'm sure.
Yes, we did.
Yes, Mr. Pratt?
I was going to make a motion.
Please.
I move that the city council approve the award of the enterprise resource planning project to Springbrook Software and authorize the administrative services general manager to execute the agreement in an amount not to exceed $300,000 excluding annual maintenance.
Okay. Councilmember Pratt made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your hard work on that. Compensation study, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, Council, today I'm spending money, and that doesn't happen too often.
No, that doesn't.
I can see him shaking.
It's hard, we know.
The, this is something we've been waiting for nearly three years, for nearly five years, as a matter of fact. One of the things we wanted to work on shortly after city manager Bartosz came on, was to put compensation study together, and shortly after he came on, the economy fell apart, not that it's any of his.
I think it's been four years, hasn't it?
2000, late 2007, I think it was, or was it 2008?
He came on 2000 and.
2008.
2008, early.
Stand corrected, four years. We went out and put out an RFP for this, and we put out a number of requests to try to get some interest going on this particular RFP. We took, sent out, as a matter of fact, about seven, I think 17 different RFPs requests on this, but we only got two returned. And one of the reasons cited by the firms was the tight schedule that we had. One of the things we want to do is, of course, implement this July 1st, and it being so late into the year, we had concerns that we would have a firm come in, and this project would go out for six months, as it did back in 1999. This time around, we're asking for a 40, 45 to 60-day timeframe, where we also did mention that we were flexible, you know, 30 days or so if we needed to extend it, but we weren't going to go very much longer than that. And one of the reasons is, everything we do, if it goes past the July date, we plan to do a retro back to July 1st. So the further out we go, obviously, the more difficult it is to calculate back to the July 1st date. We got, one of the companies that made the, that made the offer to us was personnel, a public sector personnel consultant. Those of you who have been here for, well, I think the only one who was around at the time was Karen, and I think myself, and a couple of others, this same company was the one who instituted our compensation study back in 1999. One of the things we did, we did ask them, that was to trash their comp ratio program that they gave, that they sold us on back in 1999 for a more reasonable type of range-and-step type program. The bids came in at, their bid came in at $20,000, which is $10,000 below what we estimated it would be, and they have a very good reputation, and we would like to go ahead and seal the deal with them, and bring them on board, and begin the compensation study as soon as possible. Again, our plan is to, is to get the report back, figure out how we're going to go ahead and deal with it, and then do any type of, any type of salary adjustment back to July 1st of next fiscal year.
Questions?
There's no questions, I'll make a motion, whenever it's time.
I can attest that we have been talking about. I can attest that we have been talking about this since I became mayor, so it has been four years going on five.
It was actually one of the original strategic initiatives for the council.
I know.
So it has been on there a while.
Amazing that it's taken four years to get to this point, but it was necessary to postpone it. So did you have a comment, Terrence?
No, I was just going to say, it's about time.
Any comments from the public, please? If not, Mr. Dowling?
All right. I move to approve awarding the job classification salary compensation study request for proposing, for proposal to the public-sector personnel consultants for $20,000, and authorize the administrative services general manager to execute the contract for the services.
Second. Mr. Dowling made the motion. Ms. Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're going to have a busy, busy next few months.
Are you going to be able to sleep tonight after spending all that money?
You look it.
The next item is reduction of the speed limit on Sixth Street between 89A and Mingus Avenue from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. And we have...
Steve and I will team up on this one. Mr. Luder is often a, for a family emergency up in Flagstaff, and Morgan Scott couldn't be here tonight. The chief is here tonight, who was interested in proposing this change to the council. And as discussed in the work session last week, the council asked staff to move on this rapidly, that the council did feel this was an important change for the safety of our community. And one of the things, and Steve can probably go into more detail on what the requirements were to get this done, but I know one of them was an engineering study. As evidenced by your package, we did get the engineering study done. And again, I think for the public, this speed limit was set back when there probably wasn't much development on Sixth Street. Now we have apartment complexes, we have the Public Safety Building, we have the rec center, we have the Yavapai County Building, the library. And so it has become a very congested area with a lot of pedestrian traffic. And we felt that it was time, again, Chief Fanning probably leading the way on this, that this be changed. What we do find is that a majority of the drivers are driving somewhere between 25 and 30 miles an hour, with the rare 40 to 45 miles an hour. So I think this will just encourage people to keep within that, that speed of 25 to 30 miles an hour to protect our, particularly our walking public, and the kids in particular that are walking home from school. And Steve, you want to mention anything else about what's required?
Truly, we're really catching up with what appears to be, you know, sort of a vestigial speed limit. It may have been we didn't catch up with the zoning changes, because when you look at the statute, the presumptive reasonable and prudent speed limit for a civil speeding infraction is 25 miles an hour in a residential or commercial zone. That segment of Sixth actually crosses in and out of three different zones, residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and industrial. So the 35 mile an hour speed limit could be argued as appropriate for that, those pieces of it. But in the other areas, the presumptive, and you can vary from the presumptive limits, but by and large, it should be 25 anyway. When you look at how you go about changing what you have to what you want, you have to do a traffic and engineering investigation. It was pretty clear after Tuesday evening, when we discussed this a little bit, that had already been done, by and large. But Wednesday morning, we discussed this, and Dan asked Morgan to go and generate the study, the report you see. And that's more than sufficient to enable the council to, by simple motion, enact a regulation about the speed at that length of Sixth Avenue, Sixth Street. And so we didn't, we didn't feel that there was any need to belabor this. The unanimous council wanted it done and wanted it done quickly, so here we are.
And I really felt a lot better seeing a study being done. And even our code that says just the police chief, I guess I should look that up. I really think that, I mean, even ADOT, they do studies, they get warrants, they don't just change things. So I think having our police chief's recommendation is extremely important, and we should listen to that. But I also felt a lot better seeing an actual study and looking at it scientifically, too. Mr. Pratt?
I was going to say, this is, I haven't said this tonight. This is a no-brainer, especially when you do look at the study and just, you see the list of all the things that are down there, you know there's a lot of foot traffic, and there's a lot of young people walking there. And again, I've been driving it at 27 miles an hour. I shouldn't tell the police chief that.
But when you were under...
And it doesn't take me any longer to get anywhere. It's a reasonable speed for that road. So I think it's a no-brainer.
Any other comments from the council? Did you want to share anything, Chief?
No, ma'am, I won't belabor it. You heard everything.
Okay. All right. Heard it at our work session last week. We appreciate your thoughts on it and your suggestions. Any other comments from the public? If not, we'll close the floor to the public. And do I hear a motion?
I move to approve reducing the speed limit on Sixth Street between Mingus Avenue and Highway 89A from 35 to 25 miles per hour.
Second.
Councilmember Norman made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to pay the claims.
Second.
The mayor made the motion. Who was first? The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pay the claims. I move to adjourn.
Second.
The mayor made the motion. Councilwoman Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time.